All right. All right, good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order, Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded and cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the recovery of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan, if you could read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. All right, the first meeting, first item on our agenda this evening is a joint meeting with the Redevelopment Authority for the appointment of a new member, term to be until 2024 Annual Town Election. There's one applicant, Mr. James Ellerman. If the RDA would like to call their meeting to order?
Yes, the meeting will come to order. I guess we have to have the time, right? 6:05 for our RDA membership, present as a joint meeting with the Select Board tonight.
All right, great. Is Mr. Ellerman here?
Yeah.
Sir, if you'd like to just say a few words to the board, if you like, or the boards?
I guess what I'd just like to say is-
If you could just sit and identify yourself for the folks at home, please.
People have never called me quiet before. No, my wife and I just moved here a couple of months ago. We came down and I usually like to do things in the community. When my kids were young, I would coach sports and do things like that. And then I saw this, which kind of goes in line with what I've been doing for about 30 years now, which is building not only commercial real estate, but residential real estate and some other items like that. One of the projects you might know is the Natick Mall. I worked on the expansion there, including the two residential towers that are there. I've done work around the country and I think I can bring to the table a lot of, when you're looking for funding, if I understood what I saw on the website, about trying to find funds with the state or wherever, that I'm not really sure where you find this funding for this stuff, but I think it could be a big asset in putting those things together.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from, are the board for Mr. Ellerman?
Yes, just that, this would be a term which would be the first year to finish up in April. Would you be considering taking out papers and continuing on with our board for the remaining four years?
I would definitely look at that, yeah.
Fantastic.
And if I could just ask Joanna or any member of the board, what nights does your board meet?
We generally meet on the first Tuesday of the month.
Okay, Mr. Ellerman, you're available on the-
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we meet at 6:30 and basically if we're busy, we need more options, but generally we try to get up-
No, it's not a problem.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none? I'm sorry, Ms. Jones?
I just had a comment. Your resume is certainly very interesting and it looks very appropriate to the position. That's just my take on it.
If I can just add, being the chair, I'm looking at a five-year plan. You couldn't have come in and I've got it.
There you go.
Don't scare him away.
All right, well, we'll need motions from individual boards. Is there a motion from the Select Board to appoint Mr. Ellerman?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. We have a motion and a second. This needs to be a roll call vote. So, Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
John Carter, John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Sarah Ewan says aye.
Okay, folks?
I too need a roll call vote from H. and a motion.
I'll move that we accept John Ellerman as the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Second. What do you say? Pat Mahah?
Pat Mahah says yes.
Sabrina Moore says yes.
Joanna Layton says yes.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Ellerman.
Thank you very much.
We're working with everybody.
Don't forget to be sworn in by the town clerk.
I arranged it, she's waiting for you.
Oh.
No pressure.
Don't leave it to a woman.
Are we saying she's downstairs?
Town clerk's office.
If you could just go there now?
I'll go there now.
Thank you, we really appreciate your service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would you folks like to adjourn your board?
Yes, I make a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have any to vote?
We vote.
Sabrina Moore says aye.
Joanna Layton says aye. Back downstairs. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Nice to see you all.
Pat, could you grab that vine?
All right. Have a good night, folks. All right, the next item on our agenda is citizens' participation. Normally that's always first in our agenda, but tonight it's second. So if anyone would like to address the board, the only request we have is that folks keep their, keep their items to three minutes. So is there anyone, Ms. Foran? And then, Mr. Farini?
So, good evening, everyone. Donna Foran, 2078 South Meadow Village in Carver.
George Cormier, 336 South Meadow Village.
So, thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted just to take the time just to say that I obviously, I work with older adults and I've done it for many, many years. And tonight I come to you as a member of the community at South Meadow Village and a community that's been shut off from the town of Carver. We have over 700 registered voters at our village and 522 homes. Behind me are some of the concerned residents at South Meadow Village. South Meadow Village has requested, and it's been fulfilled, the signs have been updated and completed, and for that we're very, very appreciative of all those who are involved in changing the signs, updating the signs, moving the signs, bringing in the public safety signs. We're very, very thankful for that. But there are a couple more items that we have concerns about. The emergency road, thank you for updating the poles. They actually placed poles yesterday, I think around noon time, and they're painted orange at the top so that the emergency vehicles and the plows, I guess, can see the roadway better. But there are a couple concerns. If the bog were to not be plowable, and who's responsible for plowing that bog? And what next if a vehicle were to go off the dirt road into a bog and it's completely shut down from the town of Carver? How will our emergency services be activated, number one? But also, do we have money set aside for tow trucks? Do we have money set aside if a vehicle goes in there? It's well over $400,000 for one of our emergency vehicles. So that, put that aside. Tremont Street and Federal Furnace Road. There are no signs from Mayflower Road to Federal Furnace Road into South Meadow Village. No sign at all that says, "Welcome to South Meadow Village," or anything. So people are missing the entrance and it's very, very dangerous out on Federal Furnace Road. At times, when you're waiting to go out, there's at least 20 vehicles that have to go by you in order for you to pull out onto Federal Furnace Road. That in itself is dangerous. You take an 80-year-old, 90-year-old that are still driving, and it's extremely dangerous for them to be doing this. So if we could get a sign brought in, if we could connect with the Plymouth Police Department somehow and get some type of police presence, that would be awesome. But also, life at the village. We have less visitors. It's five to seven mile difference to get to South Meadow Village. That takes about 15 to 20 minutes to get to the center of town now. The residents are spending more money on gas. They're not doing very much business in the town of Carver because it's a long way off. Speeding has increased in our village, and I don't know why, but people are just, and I know that's not your problem, but speeding is a problem in the village and it's not good. Home health aides are getting lost. The medications have become more expensive because now they have to drive seven miles out of their way to get over to the CVS pharmacy to go shopping. We vote in town. We are closed off from voting, along with our library and our churches. Every single one of our churches are closed off to us right now. Isolation has started, and with older adults, isolation is a very, very, very serious situation. We have winter coming upon us, the sunlight's not going to be out, and that's highly concerning. I would like to see a police presence, or EMT, or Fire Department presence within the village. If there's a possibility to station an emergency vehicle there, have it right at the village so the residents can feel calmer, feel less stressed, and have a better, healthier life during this transition period. Triad, is there a possibility that Triad could hold a meeting in the village and give them, you know, a nice chicken dinner like they do at all the other buildings around town? Third of all, social services, if we could get more social services into the village right now to help relieve some of the visiting that could happen because people are not leaving their homes. They've never gone out Federal Furnace Road in their lives. I've seen more people driving around in circles going, "I don't know where Federal Furnace Road is, I've never gone out that way." And if you don't believe me, it's true. I mean, I've seen a few residents crying on the side of the road, and I'm like, "What's the matter?" And they're like, "We've never gone out that way." Anyway, moving on. And lastly, or a couple more questions here. Is there a possibility that we could get a coffee hour at the village with either Select Board, or the Chair, or the Town Administrator? And just make people feel part of Carver again? Right now, they're completely shut off and it's, we've never had this in any other town around the area that they've been shut off from their community. And a couple of other things that we wanted to talk about was alternatives. If that bog road were to be shut down, what are the alternatives for emergency vehicles? Who is responsible for plowing the bog road? And what commitment do we have from the bog owner or the town? And third of all, is the town of Plymouth going to be involved in this? And I think that's about it. And this is George Cormier.
Thank you, folks, for hearing us. I have some questions on the bridge itself. Has there been any contact with the possibility of doing a temporary bridge or repair on what we have temporary?
We don't, we don't have that information. If you, let us know the questions you have, we'll have the Town Administrator put the answers to all your questions together. And, because he'll have to talk to DPW and various, obviously you've asked some questions of the Fire Department, Police, EMS, things like that. So we'll have to have Mr. Fantasy get those answers for you and get back to you.
All right, so also, is there a contractor in place specializing in bridge construction? Now, I would think that, you know, and I'm assuming that we're still in the process, the engineers, and there's probably nothing to report from that at this time, as far as what the engineers are doing.
Mr. Fantasy will have an update on Ward Street later on in our, in our meeting.
And, and the other question I had, I would, I would guess that the new bridge would be naturally up to code, precast concrete and set a port on site. That would seem to make sense with guardrails also. And basically, that's, that's all I had.
Thank you. If you, we'll have Mr. Fantasy. If you have copies of your questions, you might want to just, just give them to the Town Administrator, and he'll put the answers together for you, or talk to the various departments, and get back to you, so you'll have accurate information.
Okay.
Okay?
That's good.
Thank you very much.
And we just want to be part of Carver again. So, open up our roadway so that we can get back to Carver. Thank you.
I ask to ask one, one-
Sure, come, come, just come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself for the folks at home.
My name is Gil Willett, and I'm also from South Meadow Village. And one of the things I've been concerned about is the potential for storms. If just recently Acapulco had a major Category 5 storm and the people were not notified, communications were totally out. Now, the only way if, that you could, we could communicate with the first responders and the first response could communicate with us would be through satellite phones. What is the possibility of having those with the first responders in Carver until that road is fixed?
Mr. Fantasy, can you add that to your, your list?
So are you talking about cell phones?
No, I'm talking satellite phones. The, the storm in Acapulco knocked out all communications. The people were not even aware that a Category 5 storm was coming in. It knocked out all communications. And that could potentially happen to us.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Fantasy, I'm sorry, Mr. Farini?
Good evening. Dan Farini, 84 Faustic Road. I have a statement I'd like to read.
All right.
I'd like to take a moment to speak directly to the residents of Carver and ask them to sign our petition to hold a special town meeting to vote on two general bylaws to help keep our community water safe from large battery storage projects. We need 200 registered voters to sign this petition to hold a special town meeting. These general bylaws will ensure the protection of our neighbors, our property values, natural resources, and our water from the risk of fire, explosion, and toxic gas from large lithium-ion battery storage facilities. Additionally, these general bylaws are not zoning bylaws, and therefore, the state and Attorney General cannot exempt a company like Cranbury Point Plus Power from the town's bylaws. These predatory companies will not be exempt if we come together as a community and vote to safely cite these projects in areas that do not threaten our health. These are safety bylaws, and the town voters have a right to pass a law to protect our safety. Just like other towns are passing laws banning or controlling plastic bags of tobacco or selling alcohol and nip bottles, we can ban or regulate unsafe battery storage. And what is proposed for the middle of town is unsafe. Please consider signing our petition and attending the special town meeting. We will be going door to door in the coming weeks, and information about these citizen petitions can be found on our Facebook page, Carver Concerned Citizens. Additionally, we will be holding informational sessions at the library at a later date for the public to come and ask any questions they may have. Please feel free to send us direct messages, or call us, or email us at carverconcerncitizens@gmail.com. We will, we will come to you. Thank you very much for giving me the time today to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farini. All right, we've gone well, no, we've gone well over our 10 minutes. Is, sir, would you like to address the board as well? That's fine.
Dave Geiser, 6-9 South Meadow Village, regarding the Ward Street culvert, the existing water elevation control pieces of wood that are on the upstream side of the culvert. There's a lock on them. Somebody had control of setting the elevation of the pond, which, as an engineer that deals with this type of stuff, it's pretty plain that had that been lowered, the chance of us having that washout probably would have just been, we wouldn't be here. It wouldn't have happened. So, it wasn't being watched. Is it now being watched? We're talking about a temporary solution, a temporary bridge, which is going to have to be founded on either side. If we have more stuff going, getting washed out, then that's going to become not an option. Because if we lose more stuff, we got nothing to hold the foundations. So, keeping control of that water elevation, I would hope, is something that people are paying a lot of attention to.
Thank you. Mr. Fantasy, can you add that to your, your list? All right. Is there anyone else this evening? All right. Thank you. Moving on, we have the presentation of a citation for Jim, Jim Foran. So Jim's unable to join us this evening, but Ms. Foran, come right back up, please. And I'll just read this quickly. So, this Select Board citation is being presented to Jim Foran for his dedication, hard work, and extra efforts in raising over $15,000 for local Massachusetts-area veterans by embarking on a 37-day bicycle ride, averaging 104 miles per day, completing over 3,800 miles. His ride began in Plymouth, Massachusetts, and ended in Huntington Beach, California. What an amazing achievement. So, I know we've talked before about this, but congratulations, and if you could just pass this on to your husband.
Yeah, and thank you very much for everyone that supported us. [applause]
Want to get a photo? Want a photo? Why don't we walk around and we'll, we'll take our photo.
It's this family. Thank you.
Everybody say Carver.
Carver.
Unfortunately, he's not able to make it. He's actually installing heart rate monitors at a hospital in Maryland, so that's where he is.
Did he go there by bike?
All right, all right, thank you. Let's see. Next on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. We have a public hearing for Eversource, a poll hearing. It's work order 13226927. One petition for one new JO stub pole with anchor on Old Center Street across from existing pole 25A/98. So I'll open the public hearing. Ma'am, if you could identify yourself?
Sure, good evening. My name is Julie Longer, and I'm representing Eversource. We're proposing to install a new joint OMB stub pole labeled 25A over 98S with an anchor on Old Center Street. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 52 Center Street. If required, a police detail could be requested. The work timeline is one to 10 days, but should be completed in one to two days.
All right, thank you. Are there any citizens here to speak about this this evening? All right, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to questions from the board. Are there questions from the, on the board? Mr. Ryan?
I was going to ask the Town Administrator, did you get a chance to go to the site and look?
Of course I did. It was exciting, exciting day. So this is, you've probably seen the gray house as you're going down Center Street on the left. This is to feed it with electricity.
It's coming from the back of the property?
Yes.
Because it's on Center Street, but the pole's on Old-
From Old Center Street.
So it's going to go through the back?
Yep.
Okay.
So, it's clearly marked, you know, where, well, it's going to be across the street from a pole that's existing, so.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, motion, so moved to approve?
To approve.
Okay, and a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening, actually, before we get to our next agenda item, I think we have a lot of folks here who would be interested in hearing the Town Administrator's update, scheduled for later in the, in the meeting on Ward Street. Any, any opposition from the board if we allow the Town Administrator to make that update now?
Perfect.
Okay. Mr. Fantasy, is that something you could do? Thank you.
Excuse me. Okay, so on the Ward Street update, we all, we all know that the culvert was washed out and led to a situation that was dangerous to pass over, Ward Street Bridge, or, or road. So the town got a DCAM certification to, for an emergency, to bypass a lot of the time-consuming process when you're dealing with these things, to fix it. So the first part of that is to bring in an engineer, to look and do a plan, do a design plan, see what the issue is, how, how best to fix it. One of the things that they're doing, and we engaged the engineer, engineering firm, one of the things they're doing right now is they're doing test borings on the soil to see what the soil makeup is on the, on the base of the, the water, so that they can put in footings and so forth. So that, that's ongoing as we speak. The other thing I want to mention, I think Ms. Foran mentioned, that we put up numerous signs of detours. And I'm going to look at that again to see if we can even put more. Because I understand that there were a lot of times when people were going down and they, they kind of went down South Meadow and then kind of lost the signs. And it's a long way. So now we have them, at every mile marker, we have a sign. So, so that's helped a lot, from what I understand. Also, the police have put up the digital sign in the front of South Meadow Village to say, you know, "This is a detour, to get into it and follow the signs around." So, so that was done. Also, the, with, the engineering firm was filing a request for determination of applicability, and that's being prepared by them to, and that's, that's a conservational issue and, and other things, because it is a water source. And the, the airport cut across that you mentioned, that also, it came up a couple times in different, different comments, that is going to be plowed by the town and maintained to stay open. And that's one of the reasons they put up the markings there, so that when they go out there, they'll know where the edges are to plow and keep it open. And that's, that's had a great effect. Instead of those emergency vehicles going, excuse me, going that seven-mile route, now they cut across and it cuts dramatically the time, the response time that would have been had they had to go all the way around. So we're pleased that the airport allows us to go onto part of their land, too, to get over there, so, so that's done. And again, we're, now we're in that phase, and I don't want anybody to think that somebody's sitting on their hands, because nobody is. We're at that phase where we're beholden to the engineering company come up with the design plan. Once they get that, we move forward. We already have a contractor in place to start working as soon as we get the test results and the, and the, the design plan, and get that moving. So, so it's, it's going by the quickest process that it can go. And again, you know, the board's been great working with me, and we, we're trying to get the information out. I know we assigned John Woods as the point person with South Meadow Village, he's our DPW head. And I do plan on coming over there to meet with, with a group of people, the, probably the administrative group, as well as any residents. And I welcome that offer to do that, so. So that's where that stands. We, we made it a policy to, every Friday, put up an update, put it on our website, and it gets out into social media. And also, we send it over to South Meadow Village, so hopefully that will get out to the residents some way from within. And, and we're moving forward. That's all, you know, I can say about that, I guess, so.
All right.
Any question, any questions from the board?
Questions, go ahead. Mr. Ryan?
Has the design firm or the contractor given you any schedule or timeframe of when they think they can get things done?
So the first engineering firm that we met with, it was 12 weeks. We said, "That's not acceptable."
Right.
You know, so this one was two to four weeks for the design.
The design is two to four weeks.
So we're already a week into that, that process, and they already started doing the work, doing the test borings.
Okay.
So, so we're ahead of the game in that, in that sense.
And has the contractor given you- And has the contractor given you a rough estimate of?
They don't know how long that would take. They're on board as soon as we get the go-ahead, but they wouldn't know yet how long it would take. It would depend on how far they have to go up to replace, and what the conditions are underneath. And that's one of the keys, is that you can't just slap something on top of it. Somebody brought up one time about having these steel plates, and the steel plates are so heavy that that would probably collapse the whole thing.
Right.
So, it's too dangerous, especially when you're bringing, you know, a fire truck or something over there. So...
Is there a rough ballpark on the contract? Are we talking months, or are we talking weeks?
No, I think we're talking like four weeks once they get going.
Okay. So, is the potential by the end of the year?
Yeah, and the goal is to get it done ASAP, obviously, but also before, you know, before the real bad winter sets in.
Right.
But again, we can't make those promises to anybody, because we're not steering that. It's being steered by what the needs are, to make sure that when it is done, it's done right, and it's done safely for everybody.
And I think the important thing to know, for everyone to know, is we did get a waiver on the entire process from the state, correct?
Yeah, that would have been probably another six to nine weeks.
So, once we get the engineering, we can contract and move forward with the whole project?
We already have a contract lined up.
Yeah. So, that's important.
So, that's where we stand.
Mr. Carter?
Just a, sorry, just a follow-up on Dan's point. When the engineering's done, we'll have a cost estimate, and do we have funding options available to us?
Yeah, so, and again, that all comes down to, what is the cost? And the cost, if the cost is something that we can handle right now, we'll have that available through finance committee, the monies that they have for reserve fund, through earth removal committee funds that are stored, and that, and whatever other portions we can take that can get us to town meeting, to the April town meeting, to get it done. So, other than that, you know, we'll be looking for funding in some way. I mean, if it's, you know, if it's a million dollars, we're going to have issues of getting that.
We'll deal with it.
We'd have to get it through town meeting or something.
All right. Anything else from the board?
I was going to ask real quick, there's no state emergency funds available?
We turned off every rock looking for that.
And could we have the residents of South Meadow Village write to the people?
And they've been great, too, because they have contacted state reps, and I've been talking to the state senators, and federal, and everything else.
Unfortunately, nope.
Right now, it's on us.
Okay. All right.
All right. So, the next item on our agenda this evening is a discussion and vote to adopt the Purple Heart Community Status Designation for the town. Is Lisa Erickson here?
She is.
Lisa? Welcome. Lisa is one of our Veterans Agents. Lisa, thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having me.
I know this is something you and I had talked about for a long time, trying to get this going forward, and I appreciate all your hard work on this. Would you like to talk about this a little bit?
Sure. So, becoming a Purple Heart Community, just to give you a little history about the medal, it was the first medal to be awarded to service members, and it's also the highest achievement that you can receive, and the badge means, the badge of military merit is actually what it means. And becoming a Purple Heart Community means that we honor and remember everybody that received it in town, and that will be honored on August 7th, which is Purple Heart Day, and we'll have a ceremony. And what I do need help with is getting names of anybody that received a Purple Heart in town, because there's no roster, there's no official list. So, we want to honor those people and be a Purple Heart Community, and anybody, I encourage anybody to come forward that has that. And just making us one means we're going to put the signs out, we're going to honor and remember, and make it an actual thing to remember people by, which I think is important.
And what a great time to do this with Veterans Day
Right.
...coming up.
Absolutely.
Why don't I read the proclamation? Whereas the people of Carver, Massachusetts have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community who have selflessly served in the armed forces that has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces, and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded by the hand of the enemy while engaged in combat, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration, and was created as the badge of military merit made of purple cloth in the shape of a heart, with the word "merit" sewn upon it on August 7th, 1782, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington, then reestablished as the Purple Heart on February 22nd, 1932, by General Douglas MacArthur, and whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart, and whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day, now therefore be it proclaimed, we the Carver Select Board hereby proclaim Carver, Massachusetts a Purple Heart Community honoring the service and sacrifice of those from our community who were awarded the Purple Heart while serving in our nation's wars. And also be it proclaimed, the Carver, Massachusetts will recognize August 7th annually as Purple Heart Day, and urge our citizens and organizations to display the American flag, as well as other expressions of recognition and appreciation for our Purple Heart recipients. Other questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
All right. I just have to give huge kudos to Lisa here, because this is something we've been talking about for a long time, and you really took care of this and moved it forward, and I really appreciate all your hard work on this.
Thanks.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt August 7th as Purple Heart Day here in Carver?
So moved.
All right. You have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next is an approval of a contract for Cranberry Point Energy Source Storage LLC to establish a review fund. Mr. Fantasy, could you give us a little background on this?
So, the fire department wanted to have some ability to have third-party review of the issues that may come up. They don't have the expertise in battery storage like that, so...
If I could just, Mr. Boyle, are you here to speak about this as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you'd like to come up as well, please. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Fantasy.
It's okay. So, Jesse Boyle, he and the chief contacted the Cranberry Village.
I'm sorry, he and the deputy chief.
Deputy?
Yeah, as well as the chief.
No, the chief has recused himself.
Oh, yeah, okay. Deputy chief, that's correct.
Welcome, deputy chief. Glad you joined us this evening.
So, came up with this funding mechanism, where a fund will be established called the 31-hour Main Street Review Fee Account. It'll be fed with funding from Cranberry Point Energy Storage LLC, starting with, I think it was $10,000.
Yep.
And it'll be used to bring on professionals and with expertise to do these inspections and other things for the town, so that the town is not borne by this cost. So, do you have anything more to add to that?
You have much more control over brevity than I do. I would have needed an extra 20 minutes to do that. Well done.
Well, we can read the whole thing.
Jesse Boyle, Assistant Deputy Chief, I think Mr. Chairman, members of the board. One of my responsibilities in the fire department is to review plans, to make sure that they're designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Fire Code and the building codes. It's typical that any time we have a large project, you know, a large supermarket, or a school, or anything that's more complicated than your average structure that we see here in Carver, the fire code actually has this built right into the code where we have the ability to have a third-party review. The only unique parts of this is that the applicant, the actual developer, pays for it. They're the ones that put that $10,000 into an account that's held by the town, and then we would pay the consultant directly. It shouldn't take too long. I believe the plans are already received in Town Hall at the Building Department, so as soon as we have everything signed off, we can forward off those plans. I'll still review it myself also, and then we'll work in conjunction with the third-party review firm and the fire department to make sure that this is designed the way that we want it to, and the way that the code is behind as it is, is catching up with this type of technology.
Deputy Boyle, when Cranberry Point gives us the money, we establish the fund, who hires the inspectors?
The fire department.
So, they have no control over the inspectors, who's doing the inspection? We hire, they're all our inspectors.
And I would say that they're not typically inspectors. I would still be the inspector. The fire department is the authority having jurisdiction in this community for this type of application, so it would still be me. However, they act on my behalf where needed and when needed, mostly for design review. If so needed during the time of inspection when the project is being commissioned, they could also accompany us for that purpose, but it's typically just to review the plans and the design.
Okay. But I just want to make it clear, whoever the fire department chooses to hire, we choose those people.
That's correct.
Cranberry Point has no say in who we hire.
That's correct.
Okay.
The developer has no input on it whatsoever. We didn't ask them, we didn't confirm with them, but this is our job.
Okay. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. So, just correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the same kind of review fund that the planning board has, where the planning board hires its own engineers, because they're not engineers themselves.
Precisely. It's a little bit different in the sense that I think every application that goes in front of the planning board is expected to be reviewed by the town engineer, whereas not every plan that goes in front of the fire department is expected to be reviewed.
But the funding mechanism is the same, is what I meant.
Correct.
The applicant pays for the fund, but it's our engineer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very similar. It's pretty standard in the fire service.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
If the developer fails to replenish the funds, what's the course of action that would?
Certainly, the fire department wouldn't be willing to sign off on the project. No, there's a mechanism in here. We have two agreements here. There's one agreement with the developer and one agreement with the third-party consultant, and these have all been reviewed by Mr. Fantasy, as well as town council, and they've given their stamp of approval on it. So, I believe there is a mechanism in there to make sure that everything that is supposed to be done is completed.
Okay.
But the fire department has the ability to not approve the project or not finalize the project and allow it to go into use until these things are sorted out.
Yes, my question was more about the replenishing. You're saying, so you're going to use money out of this each year, and then they're going to be responsible for replenishing those funds? So, say, three years from now, they stop replenishing the fund, and what do you do at that point?
I wouldn't anticipate it to go on actually for more than a few months. This is going to be fairly quick. This project's already been in our lap for a few years. We've already done all the site plan review, special permits have been issued. At this point, we're just looking at the building permit. So, this is essentially any fire suppression systems or fire alarm systems that are designed. It's relatively pedestrian, as far as that's concerned. The project should be complete and commissioned within two years. However, to answer your question, there is a mechanism within here to have that fund be replenished. Within 30 days of our order, of the town's order, the developer has to replenish the fund to whatever we see fit. The firm that we've already consulted with for the contract for the review has issued us their prices and their expectations of what a review would cost, and I believe that the money that's already in the fund should already cover that.
Okay.
I shouldn't say the money that's in the fund, but the money that's expected to be in the fund, the initial deposit.
Yes, so I recall we set up an annual inspection clause, remember, and for safety and things like that? So, I guess is this part of that? Would that money come out of, who would pay for the, I think the developer was supposed to pay for the annual inspection, and would this be, I was wondering if this is a one-time situation, or is it going to be perpetual, that each year, we're going to have an inspection done, and would it come out of the same source, or is that a different?
This is one time, just for plans review. Once the project is commissioned and it's in service, this project here of the review would be decommissioned. Any leftover funds in the account would be returned back to the developer. So, it wouldn't be for ongoing maintenance of the site. For that stage of it, we'd have the assistance of the Department of Fire Services could assist us if needed, but it's anticipated that the fire department should be able to handle any ongoing inspections and maintenance moving forward.
Okay.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Fantasy.
So, to Dan's question, clause eight in the contract says, "The developer shall provide additional funds to replenish the account within 30 days of a written request of the town. Said request shall include an accounting of expenditures from the account, account balance, any outstanding payables, the amount needed, and a reason for the request. Upon the issuance of such a request, the work of the town and any of the consultants retained by the town shall be suspended and will not resume until the account is replenished." So, it just stops there, progress.
Okay.
Which I'm sure they wouldn't want to happen, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, just their motion?
I move that we establish a review fund for this project, and to approve the contract for Cranberry Point Energy Storage to establish the review fund.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Assistant Deputy Boyle, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Let's see. Next on our agenda this evening is continuation of an item we discussed at our last meeting, a Chapter 61A right of first refusal for Zero Lakeview Street, assessors map eight, lots 29, 29-1, and 29-2. I know we've received a lot of information about this in the last couple of days from various folks. We did talk about this at the last meeting. Mr. Fantasy, together with Mr. Bott, organized a site walk, and a few of us were able to get down there and take a look at the property. So, I guess I'll open it up to comments or discussion from the board. Would anyone like to, did anyone have an opinion on this?
Could we just get an update on the questions from last time relative to the funding and the timing and all that? I saw that, but maybe for the public.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yep. So, hot off the press.
Yes.
A letter from council that says that in order for this to happen, if the select board is, gives an indication in favor of doing this for housing or something else, in order for it to happen, the board would have to vote at a public hearing, which would be the next time, if we move forward, at a public hearing to accept the right of first refusal. If they do that, and that has to be within the 120 days from service.
Okay, so if we wanted to exercise our right of first refusal, we couldn't do it here tonight, we would have to do it at a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
So, there's more of another informational to discuss and see which way you're leaning to go.
Okay. How much notice has to be given on the public hearing?
So, I think it's 14 days.
Okay.
So, it'd be something that we'd put off probably till, I don't know if we can get into the next. I'll have to look and see if it's 10 to 14 days.
Okay, just looking at a time period, that's all.
So, and the other caveat to this is that if the board votes to take the first refusal and to purchase it, then the town, you'd have to get the funding for that. And that also has to be done within that 120-day period, setting up the mechanism to get the funding. And then you have to have it closed by 90 days. Town council?
90 days after the 120 days?
No, and that's where it's kind of convoluted.
Okay.
Within that 90 days, within that time. But let me read the letter.
Okay.
And this is actually, Mr. Bott here?
Yeah.
He had spoken to her, said that...
Mr. Bott, would you like to come up to the microphone in case there's questions? Thank you.
If the town wants to exercise a right of first refusal, we'd need to hold a town meeting prior to January 12th. She also noted that there are numerous holidays in between, and we'd have to do our due diligence and have a environmental assessment done and so forth, title search and all that. So, Tom, do you have a clear understanding about that 90-day period following? So say it goes to, they decide they want to buy it, and it goes to setting up town meeting within that 120 days. Now, say we're in the early January, and they vote to have it.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I'm Tom Bottom, the town planner here in Carver, Mass., members of the board. So I had this discussion with Town Council. In addition, I met with the Community Preservation Committee and a few other folks as we're doing our research on what our options are for this. So the scenario is, is that you've got 120 days to exercise the option. From that date that you exercise your option, you have 90 days to do the closing. And they sort of collapse together to make sure that... And basically, they all wind up on the same date. So you've got 90 days to have the closing, but you've got to have the town meeting vote prior to have the funds available for that. So essentially, our drop-dead date is that January 12th date for both the closing of the property or to execute the contract for the closing of the property. So January 12th is our drop-dead date for adopting the funding and signing a purchase and sale agreement for the closing.
Okay.
And prior to that, we would be doing our due diligence on the property, including a title search, an environmental assessment, to make sure, as we've talked about before, that any property we're getting, whether through purchase or a gift, that we're not buying a problem. So we would be looking at doing our due diligence for any other transaction to make sure that it's something we would want to purchase and doesn't pose any liabilities for the town.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Ryan?
I guess the question I would have is, what's the benefit to the town at this point to move forward versus the process we have to go through, you know, between finding the funding and is there a strong benefit for this versus the, you know, versus the process we need to go through, raising the money, going to town meeting, and so on and so forth within the timeframe that we're talking about here?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Owens?
I think that, given that one of the Select Board's goals is to seize every opportunity we can that comes to us to build some affordable housing, I think this is the perfect opportunity. I think we can do it. It's a short timeframe, but I think it can be done. And then if you read out the end of Town Council's letter, we can purchase the property and then deed it to the RDA so that they would be the developer of the affordable housing. We're not in the business of being property developers. But I think it's the perfect opportunity. You know, I don't know how many town homes could go on three lots, but we'd have to look at the bylaws. But, I mean, it would be more than three single-family homes if that's the way they chose to go. I think we should do it.
And if I may add, the RDA wouldn't be doing this on their own. I'd be, you know...
Oh, yeah.
They're lackey the entire time.
Well, yeah, I should say, yes.
I'd be fully involved in the acquisition, the RFP, in looking at a developer to develop the site.
Yes.
In my memorandum I put forward together to you, I made some suggestions about, you know, what could be on the site, the type of housing essentially from the missing middle study that I referenced. You can build houses that look like houses that are already in Carver, that are... It's called a manor house amongst the housing types, which looks like a big house, but it's got multiple units in it. What we've talked about before, there's a need in Carver, it's been identified in the Housing Production Plan, for one- and two-bedroom units. Most affordable developments are to be required by the state to have at least 10% of three-bedroom units. So what we wind up on the site is a mix of one-, two-, and three-bedroom houses, more way to ones and twos, because that's what we need, and that's what's not being produced in the marketplace. The default is three-bedroom detached units. So here on the site, looking at basically a sort of a cocktail napkin designed by me that, you know, you might be able to put 12 units on the site. What's the benefit of those 12 units? Well, it's additional affordable housing. There's an additional tax rate for 12 houses, 12 units versus four or three houses. We'd have command and control over what was being built and how it was being mitigated with an actored reducing septic system. And with the $400,000 the town would be spending, that money would likely be recouped during the RFP process, and that money would not go back to the CPA, but would go back to the General Revenue Fund. So we're making an investment in the future and an opportunity to provide the type of housing that we're looking at. And nothing's easy in the housing business these days. You've got to do your due diligence, you've got to know what you're into. But we have a definitive need. We're working very hard to create one unit for Habitat for Humanity at 11 Green Street. And so this is an opportunity to create more affordable housing of the design and type that we'd like to have. I can tell you for a fact that if we don't, there will be three houses built on the site. I know the developer is here in the room tonight. He's a very good guy, builds great stuff, but it's going to be three single-family houses and three standard septic systems, because that's what you get to do. This is our opportunity to intervene with, you know, what really is, you know, a very attractive potential for the town. But we just got to do our homework and get to that point.
And if I may, we're very fortunate to have you, because I know that you will do your due diligence, and appreciate it.
I have a lot of good people I work with.
I know.
Mr. Ryan?
That too.
So if we were to move forward, then we'd be having to have a town meeting before, would we say, January 12th? We'd have to actually be deciding that tonight?
We'd have to have a special town meeting.
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't decide it tonight, you'd decide the next time you meet.
Yeah.
Decide the next time we'd have a hearing and decide to...
I think what we would decide tonight, or what we could decide tonight, is whether we want to hold a public hearing or not.
Ah, okay.
I think that's what we could decide.
And I suppose the only benefit of the special town meeting is because of the other situation of Ward Street, we would probably have to have an article, I mean, not dovetail that together.
If we needed the funding for Ward Street, we don't know whether we will or we won't.
But we might know by then.
So our motion tonight...
Right, but we may or not even need the money. We'll have to find out, but...
So our motion tonight would be to have a public hearing, is what you're basically saying, and then we would go from there?
Yeah, would that be appropriate?
Yeah, that would be the next step.
And if I made that motion, might include to have a public hearing based on the recommendation of Town Council on the timing of this, because of the timing of the right of first refusal, the contract. So we'd want to make sure, we're working, you know, with Town Council, make sure we can sort of find out that date for the hearing, because at that hearing date, another clock starts to run. So we just want to make sure we've got our ducks in a row with Town Council to recommend a future hearing as date to be described by Town Council, something to that effect.
Other comments from the Select Board?
I have a question. So all the due diligence has been done, that houses, homes can definitely go on this property? Because I've had a lot of questions about people didn't think it would, that it could be because of different zoning restrictions. So we're 100% sure that homes can go on this property, whether it's us or...
You can absolutely put three houses on that property, because it's zoned for it, it's perked for that. As far as doing something that we're talking about, is putting affordable housing on the site, we would likely be going through a local initiative process through DHCD. It's essentially, shorthanded, called a friendly 40B. So we would look at a design that we put together and work with DHCD to approve that type of housing, because it needs a deed restriction on it as well. So what the type of housing we would be building on the site isn't currently in our zoning at that sort of density. So we would looking at doing a LIP, a Local Action Unit, through DHCD, essentially a friendly 40B on the site to produce the number of units that we can get on the site.
But we would have control of that? It would be our own friendly?
Yes, our property, our RFP, our selection of a developer.
The board did receive an email, I think you all got it, from Art Borden detailing a number of challenges with that, with the land, with various setbacks, and it didn't seem like it was as easy as we may have thought when we took the site walk to produce housing.
Well, as I said, setbacks are based on local zoning. Enter friendly 40B gives you some flexibility on what the local zoning is.
So are you saying the town would have to apply for variances from local zoning?
That's what a friendly 40B does. It's essentially a comprehensive permit that goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals in order to put affordable housing on the site.
So in essence, the town might be asking for permission to build where someone who just bought that land might not be able to do it?
They could file for a 40B as well.
Well, I'm not talking about a 40B. I'm talking about if a private homeowner bought the land and wanted to put a house.
But they can go to the building office, building permit, go to the building office tomorrow and pull a permit.
But they would have to apply for a variance possibly, correct?
No, if you're going to build a house on the site, if you're going to... So there's three lots that have been created under the A&R process. You could build three houses on, a house on each of those lots tomorrow. You just have to go into the Building Department and say, "I want a building permit for here. Here's my perk test. I can put septic on the site," and build those houses by right.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Ryan?
So, given what we need to do to prepare for town meeting, is there a, if we were to go that route, is there enough time with all the things that we'd have to apply and the information we'd have to get and the approvals and all that? Is there actually enough time between now and a January 12th date to get all that stuff done? And who would be doing it all? Who would be the owner of doing that?
I have a coffee pot and a computer and a lot of resources from Mr. Fantasy. So I'm fairly comfortable that we have the time to work through those sort of things.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Yeah.
Mr. Card?
I'm just concerned about looking at the numbers perspective. I mean, it looks like we're going to spend $400,000, and obviously, the due diligence has to get done. The plans that you're talking about seem to gauge between multiple units, not just three, up to 12, possibly a friendly 40B. You know, I just used your number, 12 units, $400,000 for 12 units is $33,000 a unit. What's our number we have to do to make our threshold for 3%?
To get to 10%?
That's 10%, yeah.
Yeah, 10%, more than you can build.
Yeah, so $33,000 a unit times that is millions of dollars. Is that our plan to go and spend millions?
No, I have talked in every community I've worked in about trying to get to the vaunted 10% of your affordable housing. In the absence of a significant development, an MBA-style type of development with that sort of density, you will not get to 10%. And that 10% is ephemeral. It changes every year, or every 10 years. Because when they do the census, they count up how many houses you've built, and they apply 10% to it. So Pembroke is a great example. A few years back, they got to 10%. I don't know if they had a party or a parade. The 2020 census came along, they were at 9.9%, and then subject to the next 40B. Trying to get to 10% is laudable, but our goal should be to build as many affordable houses as we can in the type and style that we would like to see. If we leave it to the marketplace to build affordable housing, they will build three-bedroom detached housing. And frankly, we have not seen a 40B in Carver in a very long time. And I think that's because of the dynamics of the real estate market, in that when a developer builds market-rate housing, they have to make sure they get enough money out of the top of that market-rate housing in order to subsidize the affordable units, because essentially, the affordable units are break-even at best. And in the absence of a robust real estate market for the private sector to do something like that, I'm assuming that's why we haven't seen a 40B in Carver over the years, while we saw six-ish at a time in Falmouth over the very hot real estate market. The difference is with a for-profit developer versus a nonprofit developer, those margins are different, and we have more opportunities to resource funds from other places. So the ball's on our court, whether we want to take control of trying to achieve some of our goals. And you've got to break some eggs. To make an omelette, you're going to have to spend some money on your due diligence to find out if it's something we actually want to buy. I can't imagine there's a lot in Carver that doesn't perk. And I can't imagine that K&amp;G Development would have a PNS for this property if it didn't perk either. So the lots are buildable, to what extent they are, well, that's where we'll have to be working with folks to do the RFQ to figure out, you know, what you could put on the site.
So looking at the Lakeview site, I saw that the town bought 44 Lakeview for $400,000. Is that targeted to be affordable as well?
That's a conservation property.
Okay.
44 Lakeview.
So I'm just, I'm looking at, if we have to go the route of the 40B, you know, when realistically, from a timing perspective, are we going to basically see the fruits of our labor with investing $400,000?
I would like to think we will. But that gets back to design and our due diligence in putting those things together. And like I said, we're spending $400,000 to buy the property. But when we do the RFQ or RFP and turn the property over to developer, we're going to essentially recap that $400,000 in the sale of the property.
So we will essentially have spent nothing?
Well, we'll spend it, but we'll...
That would be interesting.
We'll recap it, yeah.
We'll spend it, but we'll get it back.
That's right, exactly.
And I guess my last question too is, the bogs on this property, who owns these bogs when we purchase this?
Well, the original two lots, in order to make three lots out of two, they had to redraw the property line. So the property lines go out actually into the bog about 94 feet off the back. So half the bog is going to be owned by the town of Carver if we buy this property and if we turn it over to somebody, we would own those. But there's not a reason to keep those bogs from the town's perspective, because those were included in the property in order to make those lots. For our purposes, the town could deed the bogs over to the existing bog owners or something like that. They're essentially on the property in order to make the lots 60,000 square feet.
So either the bogs go fallow, or they're working bogs, and is the town getting any money from that if they're working bogs and they're... Is there a component that will be getting revenue from this if they're harvesting the bogs?
Other than using them in cocktails and food, I don't know much about the cranberry business, so I can't answer that question.
This gentleman has an answer.
My name is Monty Safe. I represent ADGA.
Please, please use the microphone.
Yeah, please.
My name is Monty Safe. I'm the property manager for ADGA, the owner of this land. I wanted to give you a little background about that project. And I want to mention something that is very crucial for you to know, especially when we're talking about the property line, there is an easement. The cranberry bog is going to stay, and whomever is going to buy this property, he have to give an easement to the ADGA to keep farming this bog. So I want to clarify this. Regarding, at the beginning, we had only two lots approved. When Mr. Bott came, he's a buyer, we discussed that each lot is at $150,000. He said, "I can do my homework, and I may be more creative and work with the Planning Board, and I may get three lots instead of two." So we said to him, "Fine. Each lot is $150,000. And because if you can spend some money engineering-wise, et cetera, we're going to give you, if you succeed with the three lots, it's going to be $400,000 instead of $450,000. And then if not, we go back to the two lots, and you pay $300,000." It's very clear on the PNS. So he had to go and spend the money and engineering and et cetera, and then he got approved with three lots. So now we understand that the town has a right of first refusal, and we know about 120 days, but this is the first time I know about 90 days after the 120 days. And I have to go back to my lawyer. I don't know. Because what we know, that within that 120 days, the decision has to be made, and the buyer, whether the town, has to be ready to execute at the end of 120 days. Now, I'm hearing something different. I cannot argue. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. But I have to go back to our lawyer to make sure that 90 days is after the 120 days, because all I know is the town has 120 days whether or not to execute. So I wanted to clarify this. And now, one more piece, maybe it's not relevant, but I have to say it. We purchased this property in 2019 from Wissam Brothers, and we've been spending money on it. We did all the irrigation system, automated system. We upgraded and replanted many of those bogs just to maintain it and make it nice and put the new vines and quantity vines, quality vines. So we spent the money, and that's why we decided to sell, because during the summertime, we spent over $300,000 just improvement for the box. And then we were hoping that that process will not take forever, because we need the[1790.66] And then we were hoping that that process will not take forever because we need the money. Was that guy, if the town say, no, we don't wanna buy it, the next day we're gonna go close. He's ready and everybody's like, and thank you, just I wanted to clarify this.
No, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm Doug Crane from Jack Conway Company Real Estate.
Doug, if you speak, come up to the microphone.
So, and, and I'd have to defer to a lawyer too.
If you could just introduce yourself again for the folks at home.
Doug Crane from Jack Conway Company. So the ADGA has a listing agreement with Jack Conway to sell that particular property. That listing agreement's a typical 5% listing agreement. But in the purchase and sale to Bob, it's actually a 2% listing agreement because Bob agreed to list back the, the new construction he would eventually build there with Jack Conway. So I, I guess if the town buys it, I, I don't know if Jack Conway's listing agreement is still viable. Does the town pay the commission or, or, you know, how does, how does that work?
I, I don't, I don't know. Do you have that information, Mr. Fantasy?
No, we have to find out.
Okay, we would have to find that out.
Just, just curious how that worked out anyways, just cause it's a, you know, little caveat there, but thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay.
Anything else from the?
So I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
In these situations that we've had in the past, this, this is a unique situation if I'm not mistaken, that the properties are, basic was, was almost sold before we got the right of first refusal, correct? That's not usual.
Well, that, that happened with the coal property. He had a proposal in, the, the person who was gonna buy it had a proposal for 250 40B rental units on the coal property. And we had 120 days and we did it. And it was like boom, 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 boom. So I mean, it hasn't happened very often, but it did happen in the past and things just moved quickly. I think it's just a question of having the will, you know, to do it.
There are two things that trigger the 61A. One is a change of use and one is a sale. So if someone wanted to take their agricultural property and build houses on it and not sell it, just build a subdivision, that would be a change of use. And so that would require an appraisal by the town. In this case, it's a straight out sale and that sale is what triggers the 61A. So you don't have to do the appraisal at that point. You have a bona fide offer, you know, you have to match. So those are the two things that trigger 61A, a change in use or the sale. And in this case, it's a sale and the process doesn't start until there's a purchase and sale because they have to send that into the town and say, here's our purchase and sale. Here's the bona fide offer that you have to match.
Another follow-up question. So best case and worst case scenario, how many affordable units if the town did purchase this? Do you, do you comfortably feel we could get?
Well, I, I have said before that.
I know there are different options you told us.
DHCD and mass housing consider four dwelling units per acre sort of a minimum for affordable housing. So we look at this site and there is 3.26 acres of upland. So if we look at four units per acre at 3.26, round down to 12. And that's just a number just for order of magnitude. What'll go on the site depends upon the design. But it's just a placeholder number to get an idea.
So, so you would say 12 dwelling units on this?
I'm, I'm saying if you just took averages, what DHCD calls an average density of four dwelling units and you got three acres, three times four is 12. But it could be, could be 10, could be, could be more depending upon the design.
Well, say, say.
It says five to 12 dwelling units per acre.
Just thinking forward, so if you had 12 dwelling units, that would be three, four family units?
My, my goal would be to not create, to create the majority of these units is one in two-bedroom units.
Well, I guess that was my question. So what number, what number of bedrooms on a property do we need a public water supply? Because don't we go over, isn't there a question of if you have more than a certain number of bedrooms per, per acre?
There is, I don't have that number in front of me, but that's one of the things we'll plug into our due diligence. What that threshold be?
But I think that, I think that goes to the question of how many dwelling units we could get on there. Cause I think that would be something we would need to know.
Plus septic too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, a septic too. I think that's all information that. I think, I think that's one of the issues here is it, it's, it's a rushed process and. But I, I, I thought when we went back, yes, sir? I, I think, I'm thinking back to previous discussions we've had and I, and I don't know what the number is, but I know there's a number of, of bedrooms per acre, I think it's per bedrooms per acre, that you go over a certain number, it's now a public water supply. And that, I think that would be a concern.
Yeah, I have it as a note on my, on my notes here.
Yeah, yes, sir. Just, give the microphone, please.
Bob Glaz on the potential, I was the buyer. Getting back to your question, Mr. Hoffman.
I know your voice is a little scratchy.
Sorry. I had a few conversations with Mr. Bot and in the town hall when I started this project. And getting back to what you were asking, I was a little surprised to find this out after I spent thousands of dollars to have it subdivided and I perked it and I did all that work for it. If I had known this in the beginning, I wouldn't have done all that. And it, but I did it. And the other question I had was when does the, the clock start ticking? When was the submittal made? Cause I'm kinda sure, I'm kinda confused at that January 12 date.
September 14th. So that's when the clock starts.
September 14th?
Yep. That's when notice came to the town.
I thought it was in August, that's why I was curious. But that's, that's my only comment is, you know, what I put into it.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there other questions? Mr. Carter.
Quick one, do you have a, with the 12 units, you have an estimated square footage you're gonna be targeting for 12 units?
No.
Okay, which on the way, what, what will the board know when it's time for us to vote on? I mean, due diligence won't be completed, will it?
Then it's why we're gonna have the conversation with town council about the timing of that. Because from the date that you have the hearing, you have X number of days to execute that purchase and sale. So, so I'm doing that work right now, working with our conservation agent to find out what the phase one, environmental steps it's gonna cost and how long it's gonna take. Town council will be doing a title search on the property. So I don't have firm dates for what those things are. But, you know, we won't have any sort of conceptual design for the property at that point. We'll just know that we have control of the property, that it is developable, that there aren't any, aren't any technical issues with the site. As to far as what can be put on the site, how many units and what they'll look like. That is something that likely we won't be doing during the due diligence process because we know we're gonna put affordable housing on the site and as many as we can, you know, format that we'd like to see. But as far as how many numbers, how many bedrooms, how many units, things like, you know, the public water supply are one of those things that are oftentimes limiting factors in people's developments. We see a lot of folks who do developments to do age restricted because age restricted under Title V, you have less sewer flow. So your, the size of your septic system is tied to, you know, that flow. So people will do age restricted units in order to get more units on the site. So those thresholds of design-wise of what's the threshold for a public water supply? What's the threshold for septic? Those are the things that we'll look at in trying to figure out how many units you could put on the site. But I know that we will put more than three. And we know that they'll be an affordable component to them.
I, I think at this point, the board has, is there any more questions from the board for Mr. Bot?
Nope.
All right, I think, I think.
I just have one quick question. So, so I know we have to probably vote on whether we're gonna exercise, exercise our right or not.
No, it'll be a vote to have a hearing.
Having a public hearing.
But if we vote not to exercise our right, we don't need to have a hearing.
That's correct.
So that's what I'm saying, we, if we, so we have two options. One to vote not to exercise our right or to have a public hearing.
Correct.
To see if we wanna exercise our right.
Well, I think we have three options. Well, I think we could, we could vote to hold a public hearing. We could vote to decline our option or the board could, could say, I think we need more information to make a decision. And, and take a vote at a subsequent meeting. Now, we need to keep in mind that we're on a time clock here. And if, the longer we put it off, the more compact that whole schedule gets, but.
And I think that we could have a public hearing and someone could vote not to exercise the right of first refusal at the public hearing. But by having a public hearing, that gives us more time to get all the information we need.
Which leads up to a question that we, we have a public hearing. And if we don't have a lot of the questions we had, we had answered, that, do you, you know, a lot of these, like how many units, that type of thing. You said we need to do the due diligence. If that, if those, those questions can't be answered, I don't think the public hearing is gonna go well.
Right.
I think we were just told that they would be. That was my understanding.
Yeah, we'll know, you know, by the time we get to, cause obviously if we, if we're doing our due diligence and we, it turns up that there's an issue with title or there's an issue with, you know, environmental conditions, we don't want the property anyhow. So part of our due diligence is to get us to that point is this is a property we wanna buy. And like I said, to the number of units we put on the site, I don't know, but I know it'll be more than three and I know they'll be affordable. What's gonna be built there now is three single-family bedrooms and three individual septic systems. So our options are, and that's fine, people live in three-bedroom houses. I have one. But, you know, what are our options for the site?
But you will, you'll be able to tell us in consultation with the health agent, how many units would be?
Yeah, particularly about the public water supply. Those, that's one of the easiest ones to answer, Frank.
Right, that's what I thought, thank you.
But we wouldn't know, I don't wanna say final plans, but rough plans in time for this public hearing.
Yeah, I.
I don't mean to be a sticky point about that, but I just wanna make sure. Cause I don't, you know.
You're welcome.
Concepts are, are, you know, we have, still have to check on that. I just, I don't think that would go.
But we'll know the important things, like is it environmentally safe? How many units can we put on it? So don't have to have a public water supply. How many units will a septic take?
Well, so Mr. Bot, I just, looking at a calendar here, we have to keep in mind that we have the Thanksgiving holiday coming up. And I really think if it's something, if, if the board chooses to hold a public hearing, we should obviously hold it as soon as possible because we have a number of other things we have to do after that public hearing takes place if we choose to, to move forward. So do you think in a two-week period, you would be able to get most of those, if not all of those answers for the board?
That would be pretty aggressive, but I'll, I'll get on it.
Okay, well, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that we, you know, the whole time period is pretty, pretty aggressive as far as I can see, so.
Well, and let me say this, and this is something that I made a commercial for previously. If the town had an affordable housing trust and if a future town meeting voted to establish an affordable housing trust and to fund that affordable housing trust with money from the Community Preservation Act, then that timeframe is much easier to deal with because you wouldn't have to go to town meeting for that cause that would already be approved under the parameters of.
But we don't have that right now. And that, and that's something we could certainly take that $400,000 that's there and, and put that money in the affordable housing trust. So down the, down the road, we wouldn't have to do this. But we don't have it right now. So we have to deal with what's.
Yeah, the timeframe's always compressed for the 120 days, that's what the law is. And if sometimes you've got a developer or a property owner who's, wants to work with the town and we'll give an extension for that. But in this case, the developer, the property owners have indicated that they don't have any interest in doing an extension on that. So we're working with the timeframe that we have.
Okay.
So realistically, if we wanna move forward, we have to have a, a public hearing, a town meeting to secure the funding. If it, everything goes in.
That's right. It can be done now, it can be done.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
That's correct.
I'm throwing it out there. So we would have to have a public hearing on this, then vote, then vote after the public hearing whether to move forward or not. And then if we do decide to move forward on it, then we'd have to have a special town meeting and everything has to be done by the 12th of January.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure of the right timeline, that's all.
That is.
And I'm sure people at home were confused as well.
I'm sure they are. So that, that being said, does the board feel that they have enough, enough information in front of them right now to vote as to whether to hold, whether or not to hold a public hearing?
Yes, I think so.
I don't.
We can put it off, but.
I think we do because by the time we have the public hearing, we will have those questions answered. I think it's just a tragedy to let this go by.
But, yeah, I'm sorry, I think, I think we've heard all the information we, we need to hear at this point. I think we're ready to just make, make a decision as, as a board.
When's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, November 21st.
So advertisement-wise, you wouldn't be able to have the advertisements done for a hearing on the 14th because it's, it's a public hearing, it has to be to the paper.
The 21st, so you wouldn't be able to, 14 days, so you wouldn't be able to hold the public hearing on the 21st.
I, we'll have to check with staff about advertising, but I think, I, you typically gotta run it in the paper for two weeks.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Mr. Fantasy said 14 days, that's right. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't make the 21st anyway. So we'd probably have to hold a special meeting probably on the 28th. Probably that next Tuesday. Or the, well, our next meeting on the, on the 5th, that's, well, that's pushing it even farther. That's seven, 14, 20, that's 28 days from, from today. And this is the, the tough thing. And I, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but looking around the board, I think I'm, I'm seeing a board that doesn't feel comfortable voting for a public hearing tonight. I don't know. I just, we're in a, in a tough time period here.
Well, when are we gonna have a public hearing for affordable housing next? When will that happen? This is an opportunity that I don't think we should let pass. We're holding a public hearing, this is not, this is not approving, this is not doing the right of first refusal tonight. This is deciding on whether to have a public hearing.
Would, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we have a public hearing and we work with town council to get all this stuff done in a timely manner.
Well, Mr. Fantasy, should the, should the motion to hold a public hearing include a date?
What date would you recommend?
So maybe the last week of, so that's Thanksgiving week?
No.
Yeah, the.
28th or?
The third, the, the next Tuesday, if we don't wanna wait till December 5th, which is our next meeting, the Tuesday in between that is the 28th.
Okay, to be held.
I don't know if we have enough time for a notice.
Well, that's three weeks from today.
Today is the 7th of.
That's 21 days.
28th or something like that was.
The 28th is 21 days from tonight.
So I think that's ample time to get the notices out and then run them for 14 days.
I would, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, there's, there's no nice things about not having a local paper, but the nice thing about not having a local paper is that the Patriot Ledger is much more flexible on deadlines for advertisements than the Kingston Reporter was, cause they only came out on Fridays. So we've got a bit more flexibility as well. But.
Okay, to be, to be held on November 28th at what time?
Our regular time, 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
That work? If the board votes in favor of it, the 28th at 6:00 PM?
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday.
Sure. If it's.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Come on, you guys, please.
I'll second out for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
So my feeling is if we do have a public hearing, we can find out obviously what the public feels about it. If it's overwhelmingly against it, then I think we will have a decision. If it's overwhelming in, in favor of it and we have those answers to those questions that we had, I think we'll, because I'm, I'm on both sides of it, to be honest with you right now. I don't wanna be rushed, but I know there's some deadlines and some other commitments there. You don't wanna hold these people up as well, but. And I think I'd like to hear what the, I've got several calls about this in the past couple of weeks. I'm sure everyone else has. Get stopped everywhere. But just to get some answers.
I mean, I think I feel the same way. I mean, we wanna work on affordable housing, but this feels rushed. It feels complex. It feels, you know, that there'll be mistakes made along the way and it's just, the timing is just, is poor. So to try to get this done by January 12th, I think is, is momentous, you know.
It seems very rushed to me.
Right, so that was my concern.
And I also think based on the information that Mr. Borden sent us, there's a lot of questions about the property. I just wonder if.
But I agree with Mr. Hoffman if we decide we wanna go for the hearing and if. if, if things happen to line up and there's a good plan, then, then so be it, but if we get to that point, it's still a mess and we don't have answers and then we would have to just decline.
No.
But we won't get to that point unless we have this public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I guess before we vote, could everyone just check their calendars and make sure they're actually available on November 28th?
I had something, but I can...
Because I, I think we should, we should make sure we're all available.
So, you know, I had something.
I mean, if not, we could, we could ask Ms. Hewens to amend her motion to a date we're all available, but...
Of course.
I cannot do the 28th.
You can't do the 28th?
No.
I mean, I could move what I have on the 28th. And the other option is, is there another day?
I'm sure there is, do you mean...
What does the 29th look like?
Well, I guess my question is, Mr. Fennessey and Mr. Bott, to both of you, if we scheduled it at our next meeting, which is December 5th, do you think that's too far out and then we don't, and that, that's, do you think that's too far? That's pretty far.
I'm not around.
You're not, okay, that's, we already, we know that Mr. Hoffman's not available that day, so...
Okay, so how about the 29th?
How about the 29th? Mr. Fennessey, you are available on the 29th.
I can be if it's at night.
Okay, what, 6:00 PM, would that, that work? The 29th at 6:00 PM, does that work?
Uh, I mean...
Folks, Mr. Hoffman?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to...
Yeah, so amend the motion that we have a public hearing for the 61A right of first refusal at Zero Lakeview Street to be held on Wednesday, November 29th at 6:00 PM.
All right, is there a second? Second, okay. All right, any further discussion?
So just so, so we, I don't want to come off the wrong way, but we have to have those questions answered.
Right.
If not, it's going to be a short meeting.
And do we have the questions listed? Do we collect them tonight of all the things that came up? So, right?
I think we do.
I think, well, I think we have a number of questions and, and if the board had, came up with further questions between now and then, they could certainly submit them to Mr. Fennessey.
Yeah, definitely.
To be answered. But I think certainly we need to have an answer on the public water supply.
And septic.
And septic, yeah.
Yeah, have some number of how units...
Yeah, I just, just still feel that we should have all these things said, known before we do the public meeting, that's just my feeling.
I, I, I do too, but I can also see Ms. Hewens and Mr. Hoffman's point that time, the clock is running and we don't have, you know, it, it would be great to put it off for our next meeting and get some of those answers and then make a decision, but that just pushes it further out and we're on a limited time here.
Could we add an agenda item for our next meeting for the status of where we're at, just so we, we know, you know, if we're keeping it or not keeping it?
I'm sorry.
I mean, we're meeting in two weeks, so we should know if we're making progress and we're, we're going to be able to get to the hearing.
I, I think my email will let you know.
Well, to Mr. Ryan's question, Mr. Fennessey, if we schedule a public hearing for the 28th...
29th.
29th, I'm sorry, and on the, and on the 21st, you tell us, guess what? We're not going to have the answers to your questions on the 29th. Can that public hearing be canceled or are we locked into a public hearing?
No, you can, you can cancel.
Cancel it, okay, so...
You can, you can change it to, to another date.
Okay, so probably we should schedule a...
But it kicks out a new notice.
Right, so we should have an agenda item for, for some type of update, just to make sure we have all the information we're going to need to have, hold that public hearing. Makes no sense to hold it and not have the information we need.
Right. I'll be happy to be, come back with an update.
Okay.
Okay. So what does it do to our timeline if we have the meeting on the 29th and you've got all your information, but then this, people here have other questions and other things that then bring up more issues that need to get resolved?
So get your questions into Mr. Bott, Mr. Fennessey.
I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about this, the public hearing when the public comes and that, and more issues come up.
So, Mr. Fennessey, correct me if I'm wrong, because one of these has not come up while I, while I've been chairman, so just to make sure I have everything, if we hold this public hearing on the 29th...
Yeah.
We still haven't voted to exercise our option on this property. All we voted to do is have a hearing.
Right.
At the conclusion of that hearing...
This has nothing to do with the ultimate decision.
Right, at the conclusion of that hearing, we would hold a vote to, to, up or down. So if that's your answer, if we don't have the information we need, then we, we vote no.
Yep.
So, we're not, we're not committing to anything tonight except, except a hearing.
Exactly.
All right, all right, so we still haven't taken a vote. So any further discussion on the public hearing? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bott, and thank all of you.
Thank you, you're all.
Except so if I know some land, there's usually a 40p project, you know, they kind of put them in wetland areas, areas where conservation doesn't really have the authority to control a project. This land is kind of a narrow strip, this is not wetland, it's a narrow strip, and it's grounded, it's from...
I think, I think, I think the time for that would be at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, the time for these questions will be at the public hearing.
Well, we have to move on to our next agenda item, sorry.
You could, you should certainly submit any questions after Mr. Fennessey and Mr. Bott.
But, but is there somebody in town that buys land? Who do I talk to?
I, I, I don't, I couldn't give you that information right now.
I mean, more encourage, well, that's funny.
I don't know if I have the right to say that, but I'm giving you another option.
Okay, if you could just give it to, to Mr. Fennessey and he'll get...
Because I have a plan to have time to this side.
Okay.
Same single, same area.
All right.
I have another land.
To give any, anything you have to Mr. Fennessey and he'll, he will distribute it to the board.
Thank you.
Now, wants to buy some land, who would they tell him to do it?
Okay.
All right.
Do you want, I was going to ask if you want to postpone our next item till the next meeting or I don't know?
No, our next item is a fairly, fairly quick item.
Is it?
It's just an update, that's all, it's not, not really a discussion point.
We have a two-minute recess.
Yeah, we'll be in recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
All right, Area 58, we're, we're back. All right, folks, we're, we're back, thank you, and we will move on to our next agenda item, which is an update on select board and town administrator goals and objectives. And this is really just an update of, of what we've addressed and what we haven't. If people would like to have a more in-depth discussion on one or more of these goals, just let us know and we'll schedule it for the next agenda, okay? I'll review the select board goals and Mr. Fennessey will review the town administrator goals. So the select board set a number of goals, we chose not to rank them, I think maybe we should at some point reconsider that, but we chose not to rank them. So anyway, continue to assess and choose projects for ARPA funding, well, obviously that's been, that's been addressed and dealt with. Continue working to broaden citizens' participation on boards and committees, I think the town administrator's office, the tax collector, various people are all reaching out and, you know, trying to reach out to people any way we can to, to get folks on boards and committees. I just had a conversation with somebody from the executive board from South Metal Village earlier about that, he's going to put the word out there, so I think we're, we're doing everything we can to reach new people.
So do we know that the other boards and committees are having the same agenda item where in the beginning they do citizens' participation or is it just us?
I, 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 well, I think this isn't citizens' participation as an agenda item, this is citizens', getting them to, to apply for positions on boards and committees.
Oh, that part, okay, sorry.
That's what, that's what this is.
Sorry.
That's all right. Making sure the town budget process for next fiscal year is started earlier and finished earlier than the past, also making sure financial management policies are followed during the budget process. I think we've taken steps to address that, but the committee...
I think it's running a little behind, that's my feeling.
Yeah, we're behind.
Yeah, and maybe at the next, maybe at the next agenda item, we could discuss that a little bit.
I think so.
Support and endorse an updated house production plan, an updated master plan, an updated open space and recreation plan, all of which are currently out of date, so the town will be eligible for state grant funds. I think we've started some of that process, I, I don't know where it's...
We have, but we're still in limbo with the open space plan.
Yes, the serpent.
Yes.
Okay, the next, work preemptively about affordable housing, obviously we just had a, a long discussion about that. Health and safety of Carver residents, including aquifer protection and clean drinking water. I think Mr. Fennessey may have a brief update regarding some of those things in his continuation of his town administrator update. Management of taxes through business development and financial management, this is a long goal, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I think, again, I think some of that has to do with the committee that you folks are, are on, sort of meshes together. Number eight, revenue driven, working with the planning board to develop strategy for new growth. I, I don't know if anything has really happened there. And number nine, create policies and procedures for appointed committees that are in adherence to town bylaws. As far as I know, all our policies and procedures are, are in adherence with town bylaws, so I'm not sure what exactly that, I'm not sure whose that was, but it wasn't mine. But I think, I think as far as I know, we're in adherence with, with town bylaws. So, um, does anyone want, want more of those discussed at the next meeting? I think there was number three, item three, I think, Mr. Ryan, I think I saw you indicate you'd like that.
Yes, the town budget process and...
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like an update on the status of our open space and recreation plan.
Number four, okay. So, Mr. Fennessey, if you could just make note of that, we'll, we'll get that on the next, on the next agenda, or one of the, if, if the next agenda appears very long, then maybe we'll, I mean, if, if that's okay with, with the two of you, we'll work in the next couple of agendas. Mr. Fennessey, if you could just review the town administrator goals quickly?
Okay, first of all, is work with department heads to bring previously approved ARPA projects to completion, and we're working on that, that's ongoing.
Yeah.
Work with the finance director to manage the budget process. We have an interim finance director, we're working on that. We're getting deeper into the budget process right now with, we've had departmental, so all the departments have submitted their budgets, their preliminary budgets. We've had meetings, the finance, interim finance director, myself and Ms. Moklin, I'm sorry, Weston, it's Weston. Met with several department heads, police, O and M, library, what else do we meet with?
Okay, you, it's in process.
Yeah, it's in process. Review shared expenses with the school in town, we're working on that with, with schools. Return, this one is actually a, should be a select board action. Return non-union employees to 75, 25 healthcare as promised when they were hired, so we don't lose key people in 2025.
And that was, that was something we had a previous discussion on and have a possible agenda item.
And again, that probably should be shifted over to...
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a select board goal, yeah.
Goal, not the town administration, I don't have that control, but. Number five, return conservation agent position full-time, that's been my goal, this is going into the third budget and it will be a full-time position applicable, whether the current town conservation agent can do that many hours, but we will get it to a full-time position. Updating our open space and recreation plan, we were just talking about that, that's similar to the other one, and that's being worked on. One of the things in that says, working with schools to ensure young people understand the importance of wetland and open space. We recently had a civic day at the high school, middle high school, and Gary Flaherty was there, the conservation agent, to talk about what, what we could do and how we protect the, the wetlands and so forth. Good select board decision-making by providing thorough and accurate information, try to do that in terms of my daily activities, multiple emails. I don't know what that means, the next one, process capture and improvements for town operations.
I don't, I don't know, does anyone remember?
I think that was kind of like doing the budget process and things like that, anything that we can...
So capture, what does that mean?
You know how I documented the budget process?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that kind of thing.
Okay, okay.
SOP, standard operating procedures.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I get that. Detailed budget timeline with drop dead delivery dates and budgeting components for capital and operational expenses.
That was mine.
Finally, delivery 30 days before town meeting. We're on target, believe it or not, before the November 30th.
Okay.
I'm, I'm telling you.
Well, I think that sort of jives with the discussion we're going to have about one of the select board goals at the next meeting as well, so I think that...
Last, make recommendations, alternatives to legal costs relating to town expenses. It is what it is, I don't know what to say.
That's, that's a tough one to...
You know, legal is legal, you know, no matter who you get, it's, you get a lawsuit against you, you got to defend it, you got issues that need to be addressed, you got to get them addressed, so...
Yes, you do. Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Fennessey, does anyone have anything on the town administrator goals and objectives?
Well, I just think, follow up on that 7525 issue, we talked about getting the numerics behind what it's going to cost the town in additional health insurance, what it's going to cost us on OPEB.
Okay.
So that's just something that...
Could, could you make a note of that?
Yeah, I mean, that's on, yeah.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. J...
Sure.
Mr. Fennessey, didn't you say that we are already paying that?
Yeah.
Could you explain that a little bit more?
So technically, right now, if we went back to the 7525 versus a 50/50, there'd be no net increase, we just wouldn't get the decrease going down the road.
But it would, it would impact OPEB on a long-term basis.
Again, that's where we're at now, yeah, so, so ultimately, we'll lose the, the town's savings and that would impact OPEB.
Okay.
But it won't...
But, but it's where it is right now, it would just stay the same.
We'd just stay the same.
Keep going along.
All right. Well, Mr. Carter, if you have, yeah, questions about that follow-up with Mr. Fennessey and let him know. Okay, anything else on, on that? All right, and I'm just, again, I apologize for moving so fast, I know a couple of us have time challenges this evening, so I'm trying to get through as much as I, as much as I can. Next item on our agenda is approval of the ABCC 2024 seasonal population estimate form, and the form estimates our seasonal population at 11,645 residents. Is there...
I don't think they counted me in there.
The short one.
Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, let's see, approval of the twenty-twenty-four licenses continues upon all taxes due being paid in full. And I need to read the licenses, so there's a number of them. Uh, first of all, liquor licenses, package store, all alcoholic, uh, Carver Main Street Liquors, Carver Square Wine and Spirits, Dave's Liquors, Jamie's Fine Wine and Spirits, uh, liquor, package store, wine and malt.
I think what you can do is do a motion to approve those and then go to the next category.
Individual categories?
Yeah.
All right.
Could I move that they're, um, approved, contingent to taxes paid, required inspections completed, and insurance up to date? Is that okay?
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next is liquor, package store, wine and malt, uh, Carver E E N Biz- Beverages LLC, uh, Commonwealth E E N A B LLC, and Quickies.
So, same thing, uh, approve contingent upon taxes paid, required inspections completed, and insurance up to date?
All right.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Uh, let's see, liquor pub and, or farmer brewery, Upland Ale Company Brewery Forty-four.
Well, it's going to be the same motion, so taxes paid, um, required inspections completed, and insurance up to date.
Could we make a blanket motion?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Fantasy, could we just?
So, yeah, all the licenses were listed in the agenda.
Yeah.
So, you could just say motion to approve all of the licenses as.
So, Mr. Fantasy, do you, do you?
They were, they were posted with the agenda.
They were all posted.
So, Mr. Fantasy, earlier our discussion, you, you advised me that I had to read all these. Do you, do you still feel that we have to read them all?
Generally how it's done, but, you know, I, I, I guess we could.
Yeah, I don't know if all towns post it with the agenda.
Yeah.
So, these, these, on the, on the website, these were included in the website on the agenda?
That way, they're already.
Okay.
So, so that's fine.
Okay. All right. So, so, you know, you feel there's a, a motion to approve all licenses listed on the agenda? All licenses listed on the agenda?
Contingent upon taxes paid, required inspections completed, and insurance up to date would be a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there, is there an issue?
No, we're just saying, I didn't know they were posted.
All right.
On the website.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. And I just want to confirm, Mr. Fantasy, you're comfortable with the?
I am.
Not reading them all?
As long as, as long as. As long as it's noticed, yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Uh, let's see, town administrator update. Mr. Fantasy?
Okay, so I already talked, oops, sorry. Already talked about the Watt Street, uh, and I'll get some more information on that, uh, from all the questions that came out. Uh, North Carver Water District, in, uh, last, last meeting, I discussed, we had an emergency situation where we went to the North, um, Town of Middleborough again for an emergency turn-on of water, and that was resolved. That lasted several days, and then the tank was restored to the proper, uh, water level. But that led to discussions with Middleborough, with some of the officials there. Um, in, in conjunction with the already agreement that we signed with Middleborough to, uh, have a meter put at the, at the junction of where Middleborough and, and Carver Water meet. So, so that's going forward with the Town of Middleborough, there, because it's in Middleborough, and they're doing the bidding, bid out for that. So, so we'll be paying for that. Um, but it led to other discussions with the Town of Middleborough, uh, North Carver Water District, to look at other short-term, or, or long-term, uh, kind of actions that we can take to, uh, take care of the issues with the, both the quality of the water, as well as, and one of the key things is the pressure of the water, uh, lacking thereof. So, so that started the ball rolling and, and talking with Middleborough officials, and we'll continue that and see if we can come up with something over the next, you know, next weeks or, or months to come up with a, some kind of a plan. Um, so that's going forward. Um, Veterans Day observance. Veterans Day is Saturday, November eleventh, and in compliance with the union contract, the town hall will be observing Veterans Day on Monday, November thirteenth. Town building will be closed, as well as the, uh, council on aging. Um, the schools will be open on that day. So, that's on Monday. The budget, um, and I'll just talk a little bit more about this. Um, after Finance Director's resignation last month, we brought in George Samia as a interim finance director. George recently retired from the position of Finance Director for the Town of Foxborough, and previously served in that role, as well as a town administrator in the Town of East Bridgewater. George has initially been working on setting up the financials for the tax classification hearing coming up, as well as projections of the revenues for the town and budget preparation. As we moved into the preparation of the fiscal twenty-five budget, all departments have submitted a request to budget, and the interim finance director, assistant town administrator, and I have been meeting with department heads to go over budgets and make adjustments. I continue on the goal of having a preliminary budget to the finance committee and select board by the end of November, my goal. Uh, Salvation Army kickoff, the second annual Salvation Army kickoff is scheduled for next Tuesday, November fourteenth at four o'clock. It'll run till about five-thirty at the Town Hall gazebo. It'll be a festive event with traditional holiday sing-alongs, uh, hot chocolate, uh, tree and the gazebo lighting, and a special gift to honor the veterans in attendance. Uh, please come down and, and get, get in the spirit and help raise funds for this organization that supports food pantries, veterans, and other people in need. I'd like to note that every single cent that's raised in Carver by the Salvation Army is earmarked to stay in Carver to help residents in need. And I really want to acknowledge Lisa Erickson, who, who, um, headlined this whole thing and coordinated it, and the work that she does with the veterans, uh, in that department. And this is another event that, that I think brings community spirit to the town. Uh, last year, it was well-attended. I'm hoping that happens again this year. And, um, and besides that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Fantasy? All right. Moving right along, we have the approval of the minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, the minutes of October tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Unanimous. And October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, approval of licenses? Well, we just approved a whole lot of licenses. We have no more. Uh, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting? There are none. Uh, select board announcements. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. I just want to continue to remind residents to please donate to Shane Gets Thanks Food Pantry.
All right.
That's it.
Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to wish the Carver High School football team good luck this Friday as they are one step closer to the Super Bowl.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Nothing. No, no one else.
Mr. Carter?
Nothing.
All right. Well, I just want to, uh, also mention the, uh, the Red Kettle kickoff.